Raymond, would you please start us with a word of prayer? Raymond?
No, I thought you said Brandon.
Yeah, right.
I'm not right here, okay. Let's fire ahead, please. Aggression to heaven, Father, Lord will come tonight. Lord, we want to thank you for the opportunity to come fellowship and get together and have a business meeting tonight so that might benefit our community. Lord, if you would, be with each and every one of us that's here today. Keep us safe, forgive us of our many sins. And, Lord, let each and every vote tonight be for the betterment of our community. We say this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
All right. Y'all, everything can be explained on your departmental reports. All right, we have public comment. Oh, wait a minute, man. One thing on departmental reports. Did we ever do, I mean, I know this is, what, and we're working?
Yeah.
The issue with the city jail, that's done, right?
What was the issue?
I don't think we signed, we cleared that up.
Do we give all that out? That's all, that's all.
Yeah.
The last?
In the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
I have a question on departmental reports. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
And it's for code enforcement. On the dilapidated structures, on the one on Berry Street, it doesn't have anything designated. Is that a dilapidated structure? All the others have some kind of?
Oh, yes, there's three of them on Berry Street.
Okay, so when it has fifteen fifty and fifteen sixty, that's for all three structures?
Yes, ma'am.
So what about the one at seventeen thirty South Wheeler, unsecured roof?
That's gonna be the old Cedar Tree, it's still working on that.
The old Cedar Tree building? Okay. And so that's, that is a vacant building, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We've gotten it secured, but other than the building except the security, but the roof is, that's what we're working on that. That's going into the legal.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, which building is that on Berry?
That's gonna be the one by John Martine.
The one next door?
Yes. That'd be the, that most, well, could be the green white and then the mobile on that.
They're both Marty's or the one pick?
One pick and then one white.
Okay. Thank you. We have public comment. Rodney, you wanna go first?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman, Councilman, for allowing me to come before you. I have some questions I know you can't answer in regards to the broadband contract that was approved by you guys with the Wisconsin firm on Thursday afternoon for about sixteen million dollars. My question is, is there any relation or any ties between the council members to this company?
I don't know. None.
Okay, that was the question, Mayor. My second question is, can this system be hacked?
Can it be what?
Hacked.
Capt.
Hack.
Hacked. Oh, hacked.
Security, you know, it's a security.
Security, yeah.
And will the city be using this system in regards to most of their buildings or Melvin buildings? And we all have trouble getting signals through Melvin buildings. Those are my questions I have in regards to this new system. And I give you back about two other minutes that I have.
We'll probably have our consultant up and try to set a meeting up and anybody that's interested in asking questions like these. Those have been good questions to answer. Thank you for your time. You bet. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one thing to say. He said contracts over. Do we have a signed contract with him or we just approved the bids?
We just approved the.
Approved the bid, so we do not have a signed contract.
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Miss O'Neil.
Thank you. And I think I've already spoken most everything that I wanted to say to most of you, but this is on broadband. And I have a lot of questions. And I have, and first, I'd like to know when the taxpayers are gonna know more about this because this has been like in thirty days that you could actually come up and start spending that kind of money. And, and also, I'd like to know more about who's gonna be doing this. And it just, like I said, it doesn't smell right to me. I don't know why, but there's something that it just, it doesn't sit right. There's, there's, we don't have enough answers. We haven't had enough input. And, you know, maybe it would be good, I don't know. But I need to know more about it. And I think our taxpayers do too. So that's what I wanted to say. And I have studied a lot about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Miss O'Neil.
All right. Do you wanna move on through it up? Let's do that. I would consider the approval, the presentation of the city's annual, how about you, you and I?
I appreciate it, like, sir. We gotta revisit the other, we just moving on with that. My name, my name is Greg Peterson. I'm the audit partner on the audit. Tonight, I wanna present the results of our audit. I think y'all probably have a copy of the report in front of you. It's a pretty thick report. And like any good book, we're gonna skip right to the back and talk about some of the summary information that we have. So if you would, if you turn to page seventy-nine.
So some good stuff in between that, take seventy-nine?
Yes, sir. We'll get to some of that other good information. I just wanna hit the highlight here on page seventy-nine. This is the, this is the summary of our audit results.
Thank you.
So, so the point of an audit is for the auditor to come in and render an opinion on the financial statement. So when we do our audits, we look at the numbers, but we also look at the city's internal controls over their processes to help develop some of these numbers because the controls have problems and possibly there could be misstatements in the financial statements. So in our opinion, we're gonna issue an unmodified opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. And through our review of the city's internal controls, we did not identify any findings on those internal controls that we would consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So, in summary, what I'm saying is, we got a clean audit with the financial statements, with the actual balances, and in our review of the internal controls. So very, very good positive results from, from the actual audit itself. So now we'll get to some of those other pages between one and seventy-nine. If we can, we'll turn to page twenty-two. So page twenty-two is the balance sheet of your governmental funds. And what we're, what we're gonna look at today is, we're gonna focus primarily on your general fund. So the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. So we're looking at the general fund, total assets of about seven point nine million dollars. And about seventy-eight percent of that is sitting in cash and cash equivalents and restricted cash. So the general fund's very liquid and able to pay for current expenditures. Next number I wanted to point out there is your fund balance. That's, that's a pretty important measure that we like to look at when we're looking at the general fund is what your, your fund balance. So your fund balance is at six point nine million dollars. And you have total unassigned fund balance of about five million funds. So what that means unassigned is that money's not really restricted for any specific purpose, but really available for any of the city's future operations. And when we look at that, we'd like to see, you know, what's that unassigned balance compared to, you know, current year expenditures? So you have about seven months' worth of expenditures sitting in an unassigned fund balance in your general fund. Now, the general fund does receive subsidies from the utility fund as intended, but there's obviously a lot of available funding here for the time of operations. Next, we'll turn over to page twenty-four. So page twenty-four is the income statement side. We're looking at the balance sheet. Now we're gonna look at the income side of your general fund. Your general fund has six point eight million dollars of revenue. That's a decrease of about one point three from last year. If y'all remember, last year, there was a one-time contribution from JEDCO of about one point three million dollars. So actually, when we adjust that number out, the general, the total revenues for this year actually increased about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over prior year. Next, we have total expenditures of eight point four million dollars. Again, we see a pretty significant decrease from prior year of about three point two million dollars. And again, last year, there were a lot of capital improvements, so city improvements plus the Jasper United improvement. So that, that comprised about the three point two million dollar difference that we're seeing year over year. When we adjust that out, your expenditures are pretty flat year over year. All those expenditures have been properly budgeted, and there were no negative variances when looking at budget to actual.
The actual spend?
Yes, sir. So when we compare the budget to the actual, we didn't see any negative variances there.
So we're pretty much on track with that, with that eight point four million, that total expenditure?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and when we, you know, if we're to further break down that eight point four million, about four and a half million of that is about payroll. Got about seven hundred thousand dollars of capital improvements. Then you got about another three point two million dollars of just general operations, which is very comparable and consistent with, with allocation.
That will cover, that will cover our current expenditures, correct?
Those were the current expenditures for twenty-four.
Okay, that's what that is?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the, the unassigned fund balance is about five million. Now, reference, that's for, that's available for next year. Twenty-one, current year.
Okay, that's what we have now available for the current year, that?
Yes. Yeah.
Five point.
Yeah, that's just the carryover from the previous, yeah, from twenty to twenty-one. Just a carryover. Yes, sir. Uh, next, we'll turn to page twenty-six. So here, we're looking at the balance sheet for the utility fund. A utility fund has about forty-four million dollars of current assets. About ninety-three percent of that is sitting in cash and restricted cash. We have total liabilities of three million dollars, so of current liability, so plenty of cash to cover your current liabilities. Your ending net position for your proprietary fund, utility fund, is fifty-seven point one million dollars. So again, a very liquid, very healthy utility fund. Uh, just turn it over to the next page, on page twenty-seven. We're gonna look at the income statement for that utility fund. So we had total revenues of twenty-three point six million. Again, very consistent with prior year. Uh, we have total expenditures of sixteen point five million. Again, very flat comparison to prior year. Honestly, when we look at those numbers, I think they probably, you know, swung maybe a hundred thousand dollars either way for revenues and expenditures. So again, very flat year-over-year operations. Going down to the transfers out, as I mentioned earlier, the utility fund does transfer money over to the general fund. Uh, we had total transfers out of four point two million dollars this year. Uh, that was about a three million dollar decrease from prior year. And again, that three million dollar decrease is because utility funds sent money over to the general fund last year to pay for those capital improvements. Didn't happen again in this year, therefore, those transfers out decreased.
Do we have that broken down, Denise, as to what, we spent that on?
That was what we finished yesterday, we remembered.
Okay. Thank you.
The next thing I wanted to go over was actually the, some of the notes to the financial statements. Uh, so the notes section is basically just a little bit, goes into a little bit more detail on some of the specific balances that we've talked about. Uh, page thirty-nine. I wanted to point out, you see note D two. So this is the transfers in and out. What this table does is it just shows which funds transferred money to who and how much. Um, so earlier, when I said utility fund transferred money over to the general fund, this table right here just provides more detail regarding that information. The next note I'd like to point out is on page forty-three. So page forty-three is the table of your long-term liabilities. You know, typically, we don't talk about long-term liability, but I figure we wanna talk about it today since they're going down. That's always a good thing, you wanna see your long-term liabilities go down. Uh, so for the governmental funds, your certificate of obligations went down just because of your normal principal payments. Uh, your compensated absences were pretty flat, that's just vacation time. And then you have your pension and your health benefit plans, which both saw pretty, well, the pension plan saw a pretty significant decrease, um, which is a good thing. So that pension liability with those actuarial studies actually decreased. And your healthcare plan went up just a little bit, but that would be anticipated just because we all know healthcare costs continue to go up. Uh, but the, the increase was, was, was fairly minimal. Um, so again, just wanted to, to bring those to your attention. And then the final thing I wanna talk about is on page seventy-two.
What page?
Uh, seventy-two. So these are the financial statements of your component units. So these are the financial statements for JEDCO. Uh, JEDCO has total assets of seven point nine million dollars. Two point three of that being cash and cash equivalents. Um, and then about eighty-five percent of the remaining balance being capital assets that, um, so the industrial part, land and improvements, and all that's netted against accumulated depreciation. Combined all that, like I said, that gets you to total assets of seven point nine million dollars. You have total liabilities of seven hundred thousand dollars and an ending net position of seven million dollars. So JEDCO, again, very liquid, has plenty of money to pay for current liability.
So what's, the seven point one million is what now?
Uh, that's your ending net position, so that'd be your ending equity.
That's what they have?
Yeah. Yeah, for governments versus commercial, you hear fund balance for governments and equity would be like if you're looking at a commercial enterprise. Uh, the next page, page seventy-three, that's the income statement for JEDCO. Have about one point two million dollars in total revenues. One point two million of that is their allocation of sales tax. You have operating expenditures, expenditures of seven hundred thousand, which netted you to a positive net change of five hundred and seventy-six thousand. So plenty of revenues coming in to pay for JEDCO operations. And that kinda covers all the, the hot points I wanted to talk about. Happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
The opinion unmodified, that's a clean opinion, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, yes. So that's, again, the highest level you can receive in an audit is an unmodified opinion. Well, if y'all have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Consider approval of three sets of minutes from the regular city council meeting on January tenth, special call city council workshop at January twenths, and the public hearing, special call meeting on February thirtieth. Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Number two, consider Jasper Police Department two thousand twenty-one Rachel profiling report. Your general, your general?
Mayor, that's just the annual report we do every year, and we have to file with the state. Dr. Del Carmen puts it together for us. And all it is, is just making y'all aware it's done, and it's filed with the state before the deadline.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I'll probably.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Consider approval, LEV street lighting project bids. Are we kinda, where to stand still and find out if the part that they use is the same correctly? Well, Mayor, I read the, I guess this is the recommendation, Denise, this from Jared Taylor.
Well, there is a.
Recommendation.
Uh-huh. On one of them, and then there is also an email from Bob Sowers, which is with Brightstar. When we left the, the last meeting, you had, I had sent the, the four sheets that had come from Lyron.
Right.
I sent that to Bob Sowers with Brightstar and asked for his opinion that we, that you had some questions, and would he please verify that the light that we were purchasing through them were the same lights that we gave the samples from. Today, I talked to him, and he said those were the same lights. He said they were bought from the manuf, or they were, would be bought from the manufacturers, the same manufacturers that, that manufactures the Lyron. But Lyron is done through a distributor. Now, the number that he gave me, the ML one oh one, is the same number that we have here. But I cannot, I mean, I'm just telling you what he's told me. I can't tell you.
I know.
I, I thought one of the concerns was, had to do with warranty.
Well, this.
That we needed to make sure that.
It does have a ten-year warranty on, on his email. If, if you'll resort it down in the body of it, he states that it's a ten-year warranty. It's the same, it's talking about the galvanized arm, the fixture. But then again, I cannot say that it's the same light as, as the Lyron, except for the fact that he gave me the same part number.
And Jared has concerns about both.
Right.
So it was kind of.
Yeah. I, when I did not get a response back from Mr. Sowers, I reached out to Jared and, and let him know that he, that y'all still had some current concerns about it, and what was his opinion. And that's when he came back, he says, I can't tell you without enough information.
Yeah, I see where he said, I don't hear where he said, he had some concern.
Those, those were the two fixtures that we went out and checked at council that night, and we specifically asked for bids on that Cooper fixture and that Lyron fixture. And then I don't know where Meister is, uh, count a bid or if it's the same one with a different stamp, I don't know.
He just said that he would, would, if you remember, your question was to me, the fact that it was not that the Lyron distributors had not been contacted. And so I said that to him, that he was, I said.
That's what they told us at the meeting, yeah.
Right. He said, I didn't go through the Lyron distributors, I went to the manufacturers themselves. He said, this light is the same light that Lyron uses, but Lyron steps, slaps a Lyron sticker on it. He said, but the number that I am proposing to go with y'all is the, that M one one oh one.
Would they send this one that we could put up and measure?
Yes, we, he could send us one and see if it's not the same exact light as that.
So wait a minute, so what Jared, what Jared is saying is this, what MR L zero one, that's the one that he's recommending, or?
No.
That's the one that Mr. Sowers?
That's the one that, that was on the, uh, lowest bid.
Okay, and that was.
That's supposedly this light right there.
Brightstar?
I, I would prefer that we find out before we spend that kind of money on this project, what we're getting. I mean, I saw a load of purses get, uh, burned up that came in Port Houston one day, and it said that they were coach purses, but they weren't.
So are you asking me to ask him to send us the sample?
I don't, I don't know how we would do it. I mean, I guess Lee could talk to whoever he needs to and find out. I thought we were pretty.
What are we waiting on to do to this project? I mean, you know, I'm tired of BSing around with this. I mean, you know, we, we've been here once, I mean, I mean, I understand, you don't wanna spend the money on, on a certain amount, but we wanna get it right the first time. But, you know, we've already had, we've already talked about it. This is like the third time that we've talked about this?
Yes.
I can tell you one thing right now. I replaced a light in my backyard, and I said, give me one of those bright lights. And they put one in, and it's like, it's like the sun is shining at night. I mean, it's bright. What do we need to do? I think you just need to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and go with Mr., with the Sowers, with. Is that the one that's still on Brightstar?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I like to make a motion that we go ahead and go with Brightstar.
So our engineer says he has similar concerns about the lighting and will they even be operating in ten years to cover their warranty?
You know, guys, it's not real hard.
I don't know what the deal is.
It's not real hard.
It's not rocket science to me.
No, no, it's not real hard. There's five million dollars between, you, you, you got two contractors that are almost the same price. And then you've got one that's five million dollars cheaper. It's not real hard. Have each and every one of them put a sample of their product on the table in front of it, and then you make a choice if it is the same product. That's simple, that's simple business one-on-one.
Excuse me, sir, and you are?
I am Kevin Dean.
Okay, and? Kevin Dane?
Dean.
Dean.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. It's simple, it's, it's, it's twenty-one business.
We did that, Kevin, that's what we did.
We went after them. We were in the parking lot with that.
We already did that. And then we did some kind of money.
But there's, there is, if, if you have, if you're in a bid situation, and you've got two contractors that are neck and neck, and I, I looked at it in the paper, they're pretty damn gum close, and you've got one that's five million dollars cheaper, you better be asking some questions, some serious hard questions.
Which is what we're doing.
I think we did that.
I wish that, do y'all on the table live for a few days to where we can verify?
Let's address the next regular council meeting that gives them money to get everything.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Anderson? Nope, I think we should go ahead and do it now, but go ahead and do what you're gonna do. I'm tired of playing around with this. What do y'all wanna do? He's got a motion to approve it. Do I have a second? If I for the liking of a second. So we'll, we'll revisit this next month. And what are we gonna do next month when we revisit it? We'll just say we're gonna revisit what we need. If we, if we find out what we've got here, we gotta make sure we have the same light. If it's the same light, we'll approve it. Okay. That's. So right at this point, you say we don't know if we got, get the same light that's coming from, uh, Brightstar? Correct, that's how we have to verify, because it's a different light. It was the Meister. On that letter you read, from Jared?
Yeah.
Brightstar is using one called Meister, isn't it? And they're, and they indicated that that is the same light as Lyron. We just wanna verify. They said the same model number that MR L zero one, Denise.
He offered to send us, to send a light. If that's what you want, I'll have another light.
And we can, and we can install it out there and measure it again. That's what we're talking about.
Our best variety?
Okay, yeah, all right. I believe in you. Okay. Consider approval, number five, consider approval of request for code enforcement for variance on two locations, one on Three Valley Drive and twenty hun, twenty-five ninety-one County Road two sixty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. We got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passing unanimously. Number six, consider approval, allowing LJA engineers to go out for bids for American Rescue Plan, ARP, coronavirus, local fiscal recovery, on sewer improvement project.
This is the same sewer project we started working on last year, which y'all, which y'all prepared for us to go up on, which y'all told us y'all wanna use these grant funds on.
Where was, where is it?
It's the main sewer trunk that runs down Island Street down to the treatment plant. I'll look from over Park Street, it runs right down through the middle town base.
We already looked these near and all.
Yeah, we already got these near and done.
I'll make a motion to approve this project.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passing unanimously. Number. Seven, is that it? Request from the Jasper Fire Department to Conale, Adams, to Beach Grove, Volunteer Fire Department, and East End Fire Department.
I read that, that's the old equipment that we replaced, and it'll actually go through AAM, and they verify it so we don't have any issue with it.
Yeah, I think it's good. I think I make a motion that we approve that.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passed unanimously. Number eight, consider approval of resolution two nine nine four, authorizing the city mayor to sign on the Marvin Hancock sidewalk grant required by Techside.
I'll make them up. What, what, explain that.
This is the grant we got for split sidewalk on the east side of Marvin Hancock that will be done in twenty twenty-three fiscal year, Techside budget. We had to do a resolution.
Okay.
It's like we did on the one on Peachtree. It's going to start this summer.
All right, thank you.
But we do have some liability if it runs over, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passed unanimously. Number nine, consider approval request from David Schultz, permission to approve, provided listed names as members of an ordinance committee to review all ordinances, including one called codified for the city of Jasper.
Mayor, did you sign on this?
Do you want?
Did you sign on this, or someone else did? Because it, doesn't it take two members of council to present this?
To, to put on agenda. Yes, to put on the agenda.
I had, I had an opportunity to visit.
Yeah.
Most of the folks, and about twenty-five percent of them are all sort of zoning committee. So this is sort of a spillover. Zoning's going to tie back into ordinance pretty heavy. I think it was five hundred eighteen pages and stuff. And so I've got quite a few people to look at it, are going to get quite a few people to look at it. I would like to add that there was a possible position for two or three people in case we had some dropouts. And so in addition to the list of names, I would like to leave an open spot for about three additional people.
Anderson, did you have a big idea that you wanted us to contact?
This guy is already on. Charles Horn, isn't that who you said?
Yeah, Charles is on.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to see if Steve Adams would want to be on, or, you know, some of the businessmen now. We have just about everybody on here. I don't see any problem with anybody on this list. They're all knowledgeable. So I'm pretty good with that list.
I'll make a motion. We approve this as presented with the addition of three additional members.
And this is to do what, Dave?
Codification, all ordinance, everything.
This committee is just going to, the people are.
It's just going to give recommendations.
I'm good with that.
Is that a second?
Uh, yes, a second.
Okay.
All right.
And I will, and I will, you know, I'll look for some, you know, like, we need some other ones down.
You bet.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Passed unanimously. Number ten, consider approval request from Public Work Director Ray Kelly to replace this Chevrolet Tahoe currently driven by the Code Enforcement Officer Derek Moore.
Yeah, he needs it. I'll make that motion. I'll say.
Do I have a second? Do we got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And that being the meeting, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'd like to.
Good to see you, Jordan.
You too. Enjoy your camping.